All right, well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 25th, 2017 Gardner-Kansas Planning Commission meeting to order. If everyone will please rise and state the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move into roll call, starting at my right. Roberts here.
Austin here.
Laber here.
Mater here.
Brady here.
Quorum is present. Moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. A separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor. That item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item any member of the Commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Any item any member of the floor would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sub moved.
Second.
Have a motion made by Limmer with a second by Brady that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number one, Quail Meadows 2, located southwest of the intersection of South Waverly Road and West 167th Street at Pratt Street Extended. Jim Long, Ellen Brand Drews &amp; Associates applicant, Quail Meadows LLC, property owner of record. We have two items that Michelle present together. We have two separate actions, so I'll go ahead and read them. We have item A, PP-17-02, consider a preliminary plat for Quail Meadows 2, 46 lot, single-family residential subdivision. And item B, FP-17-02, consider a final plat for Quail Meadows 2, Phase 1, 24 lot, single-family residential subdivision. Michelle, good evening.
Good evening. Michelle Lanniger, Principal Planner. I'll go through the preliminary plat first. This is just a general overview. This property is located just south of 167th Street and the extension of Pratt Street. It's the property outlined in blue on your screen. It's actually was originally part of Quail Meadows, the part that you see to the north. It was preliminary-platted in 2006 and has since expired. So this is just renewing, tweaking a little bit to our current standards and moving forward with the rest of the development. This is the preliminary plat, just to give some highlights. The property is all zoned R1, single-family. The preliminary plat has 46 lots. This property to the east is already dedicated and owned by the city for a future park. And because this development is within the service area of the park, no additional park or open space will be dedicated as part of this plat. They will, however, dedicate this small piece of property outlined in purple. This will be access to the future park so that people coming from Mockingbird Street, anywhere from the west or future south won't have to go all the way to the north where the park opens up along Pratt Street. They can hit that connectivity midway. Additionally, there's some floodplain that goes across four of the lots. This will have to be dealt with with building permits. There are some minor changes that need to be made on the plat regarding the storm sewer extension, elevations, and grading on some of the lots. These are detailed out in your staff report and identified as conditions of approval. The development is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and compliance with the Land Development Code. Staff does recommend approval subject to the conditions identified identifying the 100-year elevations on lots 76 through 79, storm sewer shown on lot 79 extended past the property line, and then showing some regrading on some of the lots to provide for 2% minimum grade for drainage. On to the final plat. The final plat is 24 of those lots. It'll be the next street connection to the south from the existing development. This is consistent with the preliminary plat. This property will be subject to the excise tax, which is in the amount of $61,593.84. This will need to be paid prior to the release of the plat for recording. Additionally, with a final plat, we do require a street tree plan. This provides for forethought and spacing for trees. We do, in the new code, provide for street trees to be in the right-of-way versus in the previous code, they were to be in the first 15 feet of the property. This also allows for us to have some sort of identification of what the trees are to be, the species. That way, we aren't getting the trees that will, you know, die from typical disease that we're seeing or bug infestation. Our code does provide for some suggested street trees and such. So this is their street tree plan. The trees are located outside of the site triangle. This really allows us to have a lot more forethought in those street trees that we value so much. Does comply with the code. On the final plat, staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. The construction plans are submitted and approved to the city prior to the release of the plat, the payment of the excise tax, and then staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward the plat to the governing body to accept the dedication of right-of-way easements.
Great, thank you, Michelle. I don't know if we have the applicant with us this evening? Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? We do have two items, two separate motions, so any questions or discussion for staff? Pretty straightforward.
It does seem straightforward, yeah. The three conditions are fairly typical. Yeah, no questions.
Yeah. Okay, we don't have any questions. I will take a motion on the preliminary plat. Someone would like to make one.
After review of application, PP-17-02, a preliminary plat for Quail Meadows 2, property tax ID CF221422-3012, located south of West 167th Street and the extension of Pratt Street. The preliminary plat dated April 17th, 2017, and staff report dated April 25th, 2017. The Planning Commission approves the application with the following conditions. The 100-year flood elevations need to be shown on lots 76 through 79. The storm sewer shown on lot 79 must be extended past the east property line and grading modified accordingly. Lots 63 through 71 and 80 through 88 need to be raised to allow for a 2% minimum grade for drainage.
Second.
We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Limmer that after review of application, PP-17-02, a preliminary plat for Quail Meadows 2, property tax ID CF221422-3012, located south of West 167th Street and the extension of Pratt Street. The preliminary plat dated April 17th, 2017, and staff report dated April 25th, 2017. The Planning Commission approves the application with the following conditions. A, the 100-year elevations need to be shown on lot 76 through 79. B, the storm sewer shown on lot 79 must extend past the east property line and grading modified accordingly. And C, lots 63 through 71 and 80 through 88 need to be raised to allow for a 2% minimum grade for drainage. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. If we don't have other questions, I will move into a motion for the final plat.
After review of application, FP-1702, a final plat for Quail Meadows 2, property tax ID CF221422-3012, located southwest of 167th Street and the extension of Pratt Street. Final plat dated April 17th, 2017, and a staff report dated April 25th, 2017. The Planning Commission approves the application provided the following conditions are met. A, construction plans for utilities, infrastructure, and public facilities shall be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to the release of the final plat. And B, payment of the excise tax in the amount of $61,593.84 prior to the release of the plat for recording, and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements.
Second.
We have a motion made by Brady with a second by Limmer that after review of application, FP-17-02, a final plat for Quail Meadows 2, property tax ID CF221422-3012, located south of West 167th Street and the extension of Pratt Street. Final plat dated April 17th, 2017, and staff report dated April 25th, 2017. The Planning Commission approves the application provided the following conditions are met. A, construction plans for utilities, infrastructure, and public facilities shall be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to the release of the final plat. B, payment of the excise tax in the amount of $61,593.84 prior to the release of the plat for recording, and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on, regular agenda, item number two, Gardner Truck Plaza, fifth plat, FP-17-03. Consider the final plat for Gardner Truck Plaza, fifth plat, a one-lot commercial subdivision located southeast of the intersection of South Cedar Niles Road and East Santa Fe Street adjacent to I-35. Judd Clausen, Phelps Engineering applicant, Gardner Hospitality LLC, property owner of record. You have a presentation this evening.
Michelle Lanniger, Principal Planner. You have seen this item a few times before. This is the last process before we move on to public improvements and building permits. So this is the last process that the Planning Commission will see. Just to recap, these are the two properties that we're looking at. One is a lot, one is a tract. The western one is the tract. This is just east of Walmart and north of I-35, right off the I-35 and 175th Street interchange. The property is zone C3, and it's gone through the preliminary plat and site plan process, both through the city and the county, as this one will also have to go through a review of the county because it is within a mile of New Century Air Center. Here is the final plat. It is a little more cluttered than what you normally see. There's a lot of easements running on this property. We do have a gas line easement. We have some utility easements, some access easements. It's combining that lot and the tract into one lot. It's consistent with the preliminary plat that's been approved. It's not subject to excise tax. Excise tax has previously been paid on this property. Street trees were reviewed and approved with the site plan and shall be planted accordingly. Staff does recommend approval of the final plat subject to the following conditions: that the construction plans for public improvements shall be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to the release of the final plat. Street trees shall be planted based on the approved site plan SP-1605, and recommends the Planning Commission forward the final plat to the governing body to accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements.
Great, thanks, Michelle. Do we have the applicant this evening? Please state your name and address for the public record.
Good evening, commissioners. I'll be brief. My name's Judd Clausen with Phelps Engineering applicant for the project. We have nothing additional to add. We are excited about this project, obviously breaking ground hopefully soon, and as Michelle said, kind of our last step in this whole process. So with that, we're in agreement with the stipulations, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for staff or the applicant? We don't have any. I entertain a motion on this item.
After review of the application, FP-17-03, a final plat for 151 South Cedar Niles Road and final plat dated April 7th, 2017, and staff report dated April 25th, 2017. The Planning Commission approves the application provided the following conditions are met. A, construction plans for utilities, infrastructure, and public facilities shall be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to the release of the final plat. B, street trees shall be planted based on the approval, site plan SP-16-05, and recommends the governing body approve the application/accept dedication of right-of-way and easements.
Second.
We have a motion made by Roberts with a second by Limmer that after review of application, FP-17-03, a final plat for 151 South Cedar Niles Road and final plat dated April 7th, 2017, and staff report dated April 25th, 2017. The Planning Commission approves the application provided the following conditions are met. Item A, construction plans for utilities, infrastructure, and public facilities shall be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to the release of the final plat. B, street trees shall be planted based on the approved site plan SP-16-05, and recommends the governing body approve the application/accept dedication of right-of-way and easements. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Regular agenda, item number three, Land Development Code text amendment. Hold a public hearing and consider a text amendment to various sections of the Land Development Code regarding wireless communication antenna uses. We have a presentation. Good evening. Good evening.
Kelly Drake-Woodward, Chief Planner. So, as we discussed at the last meeting, technology is ever-changing for these communication facilities. Our current rules don't address some of this new technology, and we also need to adapt our regulations to the changes in state and federal regulations. So here we are. We have had the help of our city attorney, Mr. Chuck Dunley, through this process, many, many hours of working with Chuck. He's been very conscientious on trying to help us to fit this into our code, but also to be consistent with other jurisdictions in Johnson County. So it does involve amendments to multiple sections of the Land Development Code, and he has also worked with our Public Works Department to make changes to their right-of-way ordinance. So some of them will go through that process. So what I thought I could do is just give a brief summary of the changes, and then it's up to you if you would like to kind of go section by section and see if you have any questions or comments about particular sections, and we can move on to the next. So if that works. Tonight, we're asking you to hold a public hearing and recommend the proposed text amendment, TA-1615, to the governing body for approval. So our current code really only addresses new towers. So you've probably noticed already that we do have some new use categories that have been incorporated into our use table in Section 1705, Table 5-2. And so these things, some of these new categories, take care of the small cell and the DAS systems that are in the public right-of-way. And then communication facilities that are mounted on buildings or other structures, like water towers, for example. And these would be on buildings that were, that are basically only on non-residential mixed-use or live-work buildings, the way it's written. And then would also involve modifications to existing towers and base stations and other modifications and replacements and things like that. So all of them are subject to additional standards as identified by the asterisks in the use table. So right now, we process all new towers as conditional uses. But in our proposed revisions, some of these will go through the administrative site plans. Things that would go through an administrative site plan would include modifications that do not incur a substantial change, and we'll talk about substantial change when we're going through the code definitions. Things that are eligible facilities requests, that's also a new term that is included in your definitions in the new chapter, or the new chapter of the code. New antennas that would be located on existing structures or buildings could be approved administratively, and also replacement structures that do not incur a substantial change. So those processes should go along pretty quickly. Then we have site plan and design review. Some things that would qualify for site plan design review with you all would be modifications that incur a substantial change and anything that's not an eligible facilities request. So my understanding that this might be something like new facilities that are mounted on buildings that are not just a modification have been approved before. And then both you and the governing body would be looking at new towers that are not in the public right-of-way, they're on private property as conditional use permits. So the current code does contain the specific use standards for wireless communication antenna in Article 1705. They're pretty brief. They're really only related to those towers, as I said. So because we have many new standards related to specific policies and processes and review criteria and decisions and design and other operating standards that pertain just to these facilities, we have decided to create a new standalone Article 1711 with the more specific information pertaining to them. And this is similar to what we've done with signs that are in Article 10, 17-10. So we have retained most of the current standards that are not preempted by state statute or federal regulations for towers, but we do have some new standards for applications, associated with applications. We ask them to provide an affidavit that they've conducted an analysis of available co-location opportunities, but we can't require that they co-locate. But we at least can ask for, that they've done an analysis for those opportunities. We're also asking, and I think this is really great, that we will have an engineer certification that the cumulative effect of all facilities on the site complies with the FCC standards pertaining to radio frequency emissions and exposure and levels of electromagnetic radiation. And not only just now when it's built, but in the future as regulations change, we have that same ability to ensure those regulations are met. Also, we have a requirement that the applicant send notice to property owners within 200 feet of the proposed location, so the city doesn't have to do that. We'll have the applicants doing that. It gives people an opportunity to comment on it, even though some of these things don't require public hearings. And then we will have expanded authority over aesthetic and design considerations. For example, there's new design standards for base stations and antennas. A requirement for inspections every 24 months of some of these facilities, and to have a copy of those inspections provided to the city. And then specific standards pertaining to denials of applications, much of that's statutory, but there's at least some guidance there, so we won't make any wrong decisions, hopefully. And provision for temporary facilities in the case of emergency or disaster. And we can get into more specific discussion with the attorney and everything after you've had your public hearing. So here's our recommended motion to approve either as presented or if you have changes, we will specifically call those out in your motion.
Thank you for the overview. I think we'll now open the public hearing. If any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Seeing nobody come forward, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sub moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Limmer with a second by Austin that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Okay, so I know, Kelly, you recommended that we maybe go section by section, but I don't know if, I guess we can go section by section.
For me, I don't feel like we need to do that. I think the city staff's been very thorough on this, and knowing that our city attorney has looked at it for hours and knows that, you know, he is, this is congruent with state and federal standards and laws, I'm fine moving forward.
Okay, so maybe let's just do a consensus. So Commissioner Brady, you're comfortable?
I read this beforehand, and I know this has been patterned out probably other city entities here in Johnson County, and once again, I just think we've been thorough and have done our due diligence.
Okay. All right, well, let's just, let's just go around then the table. What's at, I guess, my right? Commissioner Limmer, is there anything you'd like to point out or have more discussion on, or do you feel you're comfortable with as wrote?
As with Commissioner Brady, I reviewed the attachment from the staff report before from the, I forget the date, on following page 20. I am comfortable with it.
Okay.
I don't have anything to point out specifically. No, I'm okay.
Okay. Commissioner Austin?
Believe it or not, I think I only have one question. I have two.
Okay, well, this is, yeah, perfect time. Go, yeah, ask the questions.
Under the definitions section for substantial change under height, what page are you on?
Page 10.
Yeah, page 10.
10.
I guess, looking for clarification on why we measure from what appears to be like the top of the building versus always grade.
That is an excellent question that Ms. Woodward put to me in the course of the lengthy conference that we had regarding the matter. And the reason is because you are measuring by percentage. And because you are measuring by percentage of change, if you measured from, suppose you had a 10-foot tower antenna combination on top, we're going to make this really easy for me numbers-wise, of a 50-foot building, a change of, from the top of the roof in the length of that tower, which had your attached antenna of more than 11 feet, would be, would constitute a substantial change. If you had it otherwise, then a 10% change would be a change of 50, 60, so it'd be a 16-foot. change in height. And remember, I'm doing it very simple. If you did it from grade, you'd be at the bottom of the building versus the change at the top. And what you're talking about is a change in the, in the accessory equipment, or the tower, or the antenna. And so that's where you're measuring your substantial change. Now, I used a 50-foot building as an example. It becomes much, much more significant if it's a 200-foot building.
Yeah. Okay.
Particularly if it's above, above, you know, where you are above grade.
Right. That makes sense. I think I was missing the piece on you're considering the percentage of change of the actual equipment, not the overall height. So I was, so yeah, that makes sense to me then. Okay.
Any other question?
On, well, on the same one, I had a note on item one where it says whichever is greater. I didn't know if that should be less instead of greater. So more than 10% or by a height of one additional antenna array of separation from the nearest existing antenna ought to exceed 20 feet, whichever is greater.
So is that saying the height of the existing tower by more than 10%? Or an additional one separated?
Right. So if you have a 100-foot tower, you can go to 110 feet, or since it would be greater, you could go to 120 plus an additional antenna array.
Because that's just kind of the minimum that it would take for them to add an additional row of antenna that separation distance included, or?
Give me just a minute on that.
One other grammatical thing, just to look at when you do the final printing of it, right-of-ways versus rights-of-way, it shows up both ways.
Okay. So be consistent.
The reason for the language in terms of whichever is greater is a reference to the requirements of federal legislation, particularly, not actually federal legislation, it's federal regulation, under the FCC, which defines towers not in the public right-of-way to be whichever is greater, which is why we're using that.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense. Okay.
And then one more.
I'm happy to provide you with a specific reference if you say that's hard.
I trust you.
For nighttime reading.
On B, width girth, two, and the answer's probably the same as what you just gave me, but on number one, we limit it, protrude from the edge of the tower no more than 20 feet or more than the width of the tower structure at the level of the burdens. But on number two, we just say protrude from the edge of the structure no more than six feet. So it's regardless of the tower width. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, that's subject to the statutory and regulatory structure with which between the state and the federal government, we are stuck.
Good.
Okay.
I think that's all the questions I have.
And typically, those would just be on utility poles or, right, or something that's not, the pole itself is not a large structure.
Well, the distinction would be between those in the public rights-of-ways and those outside the public right-of-way. And yes, this would generally be from a, those that are not in the public right-of-way on a substantial tower or on a base station.
So in the public right-of-way, they're typically on a utility pole or a streetlight or?
Right.
Okay.
And with regard to, that's where they're moving increasingly to. At the present time, there are fewer of those. But where you're, where we're seeing the movement is to co-location of facilities, particularly small cell facilities, on, as Ms. Woodward said, onto streetlights, utility poles, et cetera.
Other questions? Commissioner Roberts?
I don't have any questions, and I would agree that I think it's been very vetted and very researched and well-thought-out by our staff and the legal counsel, so I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to have to echo that as well. You guys have done a fabulous job. It was very, you know, technical to read, but very well-vetted, great job. Thanks for the hard work.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very, very much appreciated.
There is one minor issue that I do want to call the attention.
Okay. Please.
It's not a minor issue. And this is something that Kelly and I have discussed, just so you're aware. What you're approving is that when we, when we reference in these materials the 60, 90, and 150-day deadlines, and when they come through the Planning Commission for administrative approval, those are hard deadlines. So you will either be making a decision, or your failure to make a decision will be making a decision. Absent the failure of the applicant to include the necessary materials in the application and the requirement of city staff to notify them in a timely fashion of that failure, it can't, these matters can't be delayed for further consideration. And I just wish to draw your attention to that. It's a, these are time-sensitive, and that's the structure that the state and the federal government, again, working together, have placed upon municipalities. And as this is going to go through the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission will be subject to this. So I just draw that to your attention, so that a year or two from now, when, when Ms. Woodward or Ms. Leiniger call something to your attention and say, "I need your decision," and it's 9:45, we're going to have to hash it out.
Absolutely.
Understood.
Good call out. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion on this
Planning Commission recommends that the governing body approve TA-1615, text amendments pertaining to communications facilities for wireless services, as presented in Attachment 1 of the April 25, 2017 staff report.
Second.
I have a motion made by Limer with a second by Austin that the Planning Commission recommends the governing body approve TA-1615, text amendments pertaining to communication facilities for wireless services, as presented in Attachment 1 of the April 25, 2017 staff report. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. That concludes the agenda for this evening. I don't know if staff has anything else for the commission tonight before we adjourn.
Just, are you fully staffed? Have we replaced Chad?
Yes, we have. That's why I was just getting ready to tell you. I am thrilled, very thrilled to introduce Michelle Cricks as our new planner. I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about herself, but she's only been here two days, and already I'm like, wow, this is awesome. Also, you know, Judd Claussen, who was here earlier, said he's worked with her previously and that we have a good one, so you can look forward to hearing from her.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and the other members of the Planning Commission. As Kelly stated, my name is Michelle Cricks. This is my second day with City of Gardner. I previously came from the City of Leewood, where I worked with them for four years. I also have three years of experience as a consultant in telecommunications planning, so I was on the other side of the counter and presenting to planning commissions and city councils. I also have some experience between my planning jobs in banking as well, so I have a little kind of a finance background as well. I am Kansas-raised. I am from Johnson County originally. My telecommunications planning was all done in California. Some projects I've worked on is, I've done plat reviews for single-family residential, multifamily residential, mixed-use developments, then large-scale development projects, and down to individual senior-assisted living facilities. And most recent projects have been for a complete site scrape of a grade school for a new grade school construction and a Johnson County wastewater treatment facility where the facility off of 435, they're going to completely take that facility offline, take, raise almost all the buildings, and then pull the whole site up, excuse me, 12 feet up, and get it out of the floodplain, and then add 40 structures to the site. So that's been my most recent experience, but that's just kind of a tip of the iceberg. But I appreciate the, you know, the opportunity to work with City of Gardner and with the department and the Planning Commission, so thank you.
Welcome.
You're welcome. Good to have you here.
Yep. We've got Michelle squared, the double K's, and Larry.
And Larry.
We're complete. And the lawyer. Welcome. I'm glad to have you. If we don't have anything else from staff this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Brady, a second by Limer, that we adjourn for the evening. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Meeting is adjourned.